All right, we're going to pile this meeting to order. Welcome to the March tenth meeting, Pitt County Board of Commissioners. The roll call, everybody could raise your right hand. Invocation, Mr. Manning.
Father, please. Dear heavenly Father, we come before you with praise and thanksgiving for all the many blessings you bestowed on us in this county. And we ask you, Lord, to guide us tonight as we take up the public's business that your will be done and your name be praised. Amen.
Amen. I would do my best to play. Help please, Mr. Manning. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Aldo Hernandez, I'm the sophomore class president at Innovation Village College High School. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our own. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. You take your motion for approval on these bills?
Yes, sir.
Please, 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 please raise your right hand. Your fellow commissioners. Public press is before, can you raise your hand?
Yes, we have several senators to speak, Mr. Chairman. First is Joe Miller. Joe, Joe Miller, for more.
Where do I speak from?
From the podium, and while you're approaching, if the attorney would read the statement.
Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. A total of thirty minutes is set aside for public addresses to the board. Please state your name and address prior to speaking.
My name is Joe Miller. My address is eighteen fifty-six State Mill Road, Bethel. I'm here kind of to talk about two things. First is the gun ordinance, and then the second is the meeting you're having tomorrow night about the proposed industrial site. Couple things on the guns and firearms. You know, I think a lot of this, people have strong constitutional biases that they're thinking that they need to protect gun rights. Dogs aren't allowed on my property, you're not allowed on my property, law enforcement can't peep in my doors, you're not allowed to trespass, you're not allowed to hunt, your bullets shouldn't be allowed on my land. On the proposed complex that you've got, I took a look at the paperwork that I could find, and I tried guessing where the site might be. My read of things is that legitimately, the Edgecombe County site is what the state should invest money in. They've got a lot more invested right now. If it comes up maybe in favor of Pitt County over Edgecombe County is, our airport is larger. Edgecombe County Airport's pretty small, and there's not a lot of facilities out there. Long term, I think that as leaders for the county, you should look to support things like a better airport for our area, it will help drive in business, and it will help people who have large jets want to come here. Rail service, I found it strange that the proposed complex didn't have rail service. You know, I don't know why you wouldn't choose an area like Whitehurst Station for future development. It seems like the rail that goes right by my house goes further up that way. As leaders again, in looking at further development and actions that you have, you know, driving through the industrial complex that we have now, it seems kind of full, and maybe you ought to do some things countywide to try and drive more people, business, and industry in with other stuff. Another thing, just if I were a developer and I wanted to come here and put in a complex or be involved, a lot of stuff that happened with the gun ordinance just seems to be like horrible inefficiency. You had something come up, you had a working group come up with ideas, and then you voted down what the working group suggested, and then changed votes, and then you had a very awkward vote turning it down, where a yes meant no and a no meant yes. If I were a developer, I mean, that just, that's inefficient, and to bring in a large-scale complex, you have to be a well-oiled machine with everything working together. On a small level, you know, I'm looking to have a new building built, I had to get a permit, they told me that it would take four to six weeks to get the inspection done. So that's another thing, as far as, you need a well-oiled machine as accounting to get to a large project off the ground. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Bill Redding.
Good evening, my name is Bill Redding, I live at six oh one South Elm Street in Greenville. I've been a resident of Pitt County in Greenville for forty-six years. I retired after thirty-six years from ECU Family Medicine Department as a primary care family nurse practitioner. And three years prior to that, I worked as a nurse practitioner in the ED. Two years prior to that, I worked as an operating room technician at Lake Memorial in Raleigh and St. Mary's Hospital in Orange, New Jersey. Prior to that, I was a hospital corpsman in the Navy for four years, with a year at Charleston Naval Hospital, and then a year in Vietnam in Okinawa with the Third Marine Division. And then I finished up at Camp Pendleton at a clinic and doing ambulance duty there. So I've seen a lot of damage that guns can do, damage and death from guns, and it seems as though that's where preventative medicine could be very beneficial, and where an ordinance on your part could prevent us having to visit our children or grandchildren or other relatives in hospitals and funeral homes. If we can have a simple ordinance that might prevent that accident or death. So I appreciate your work on this issue. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Sean Sorrentino.
Don't want to tip it over. Sean Sorrentino, I am the Vice President of Operations for Graduates, North Carolina, and down here representing the organization and our members in Pitt County. But I pretty much know what I'm going to say. We are opposed to these ordinances, we don't think they solve the problem, but they don't solve the problem in the way you want. They can be solved in a better way. And I do want to respond to the idea that voting down a working group's ideas and taking a long time to go is bad, it shows something about this county, we can't get things done. I think it's a great thing that you're listening to your constituents telling you, no, we don't want this, and I think you should continue to listen to those constituents who say, no, they don't want this. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Gregory C.
All right, how did, again, County Commissioners, you know, back in two thousand and thirteen, the County Commissioners passed a resolution, February the fourth of two thousand and thirteen, and titled the article I have on sanctuarycounties.com, Pitt County, North Carolina passes a resolution in support of the Second Amendment. And as I can look, one of the Democrats that voted yes for the ordinance was Beth Ward. However, Melvin McLawhorn voted no. So, that's not good. But anyways, the ordinance is not going to work, and I would want y'all to vote no for the ordinance, and it's just, you know, if you really want to pass it, I think a civil infraction would be the best option. Missed meters too much, but please vote no for this ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thanks, sir.
Marcus K.
County Manager, go front lane.
Daniel Cox. Sandy Phillips. Mr. Chairman, that's all that I have signed up to speak.
All right, moving along. We have a presentation from Victorious Living Program. Come on up and join us.
Mr. Chairman, I'm pleased to introduce to you tonight Kristy Overton Johnson and her team. You are here to share for your information a program that is closely connected to our Pitt County Detention Center. There's no action requested on the site in this evening, just to listen.
Will we not at work, since we've seen it? Here we go, I've never done this, it should be interesting. My name is Kristy Overton Johnson, and I am a native Greenville resident, and moved away to Florida, and I'm just so thankful to be back since two thousand and twenty, and putting my roots back down in Greenville, North Carolina. And I've enjoyed being a part of our community, but also being a part of making our community safer and better, and helping people find wholeness and healing. Being in prison and jail outreach is something that I had never dreamed that I would be a part of. My journey to incarceration came through this gentleman right here. Many of you may know my life story of being a professional water skier, and learning on the Pamlico River, and then finding my way to the top of podiums. Well, this gentleman had a very similar track on the water sports world, he was a professional boat driver, and he went away to prison for fifteen years. Seven years in, he reached out to me, and when I was in there, in that prison, visiting him, I saw for the first time humanity behind bars, something that had never hit my thinking, something I'd never thought about. And so I started beginning to look into prison ministry, I began to understand that when someone is incarcerated, their entire family is impacted. I began to see the challenges, I was very green in that area. God began to open many doors for me, and one was for our magazine that is in front of you there, for Victorious Living, to go into prisons and jails. It started in Florida, now it's in every state in the nation. We've ministered to over ten million incarcerated people in the last decade through that magazine, also through other activities like our prison events here. We've had the opportunity many times to go into the jail here locally, every Thursday, have the opportunity to work with the SHARP program, the Sheriff's Heroin Addiction Recovery Program, get to visit there every Thursday, but our team, which is nationwide, has also come in, we've had a revival of hope there. We have been able to place men into Hope is Alive reentry for addiction. We've been able to connect people to resources. We provide trauma-informed care on tablets across the United States, and that picture right there is in Pitt County Detention Center. The men are actually able to read our magazine, to have an interactive experience with it. They get visited every Thursday by our team, but they also get trauma-informed care. I wanted to share a quick story, these are some of our events nationwide. Our trauma-informed team leader, Sheridan Korea, out of Savannah, Georgia, has been up here, worked with the team as well. That's also a picture there, you can see the pictures of the tablets at the top, we have learning systems, curriculums for addiction recovery. But I wanted to share specifically, locally, some of the impact that we're having, this was at the Detention Center back in September. As I mentioned, we visit the men at the SHARP program weekly, we've also visited with the women at the Ware program, the Revival of Hope presented, the Hope of Christ of four hundred incarcerated men and women. We've, like I said, partnered with Hope is Alive, that's a nationwide-based addiction recovery program, partner with Life Ministries for Addiction Recovery Services, work with the Sheriff's Department to provide recreational activities for the staff, because a lot of people don't realize, and I know former Sheriff Mack, you understand this, the hard work that happens behind those closed doors, and the trauma that actually happens to the officers as they work in those environments. So we're working to bring fun activities to the families and to the officers, and to the officers at Lake Christie. Also, digital access to trauma-informed care, fake mentorship, and something that's really exciting that's getting ready to happen, we're partnering with Cancer Services, and this mobile mammogram machine is coming to Pitt County Detention Center in, I believe it's either July or August. The officers, female officers, are having the opportunity to have free mammograms, as well as the female incarcerated women.
So female incarcerated women.
Incarcerated women there. So word has gotten out to other facilities, we've been approached by facilities in eastern North Carolina prisons who want this mammogram machine to be able to go and to provide those free services to officers. So that's really exciting for us. Why should we care about people in corrections? People that are hurt, hurt people, so we get the opportunity to bring hope and healing and resources to people. Incarceration separates family, it's generational, seventy-five percent of children of incarcerated men and women will also experience incarceration, but this cycle can be broken, and we have a team, half of our team, we have fifty-plus years of incarceration and addiction on our team, and they are living proof that that cycle can be broken. Incarceration impacts you, as people revolve out of Pitt County Detention Center and prisons in our state, they become your neighbors. So we should care that they come out changed, men and women. The cost of incarceration to taxpayers across the nation is eighty-eight billion annually. There's a crisis among correctional staff, working in corrections causes incalculable psychological trauma, they have the highest rate of suicide, of divorce, of PTSD. Also, something that I never thought about is just the plain fact that people live behind bars. People that God loves, people that didn't have the same upbringing or opportunities that I may have had, and what a privilege it is to get to go in and to take the lessons that I got to learn on the water all those years of how to get up. I get to go and help people get up in life, and I have a wonderful team here. We are at the Harper ENC Building, we like to say that we are, I told you I'm new, sorry, we're an international ministry with a local impact, so we're really grateful for the opportunity to share, we just wanted to make you aware of some of the things that are going on, that are good things there in the jail, grateful for the relationship that we have with Sheriff Dance, and the SHARP program and the funding that goes into that program enables some of the wonderful things that I just shared to happen, so thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. I've got a brief update on our Public Health Quarterly Report. This is from fiscal year, the first two quarters, and then the numbers we have for our programs for January and February. First thing I want to mention is the hot topic of the season, this respiratory virus season. Thankfully, we hit our peaks with flu A, as you can see that purple line towards the end of January, first week of February, that's the problem since then. So we're real happy about that, you can see on the chart on the right, those blue columns indicate that percentage of respiratory virus surveillance had flu A, you can see that took a huge jump, and then went down in February. So fifteen COVID-related cases across the East U system as of last week. The other topic around flu is bird flu, and so far, no human cases, thankfully, in North Carolina. We've had about three point four million of chickens, egg laying chickens in Hyde County that have been put down in January, and then twenty-six thousand turkeys in Oxanson County at two farms that were done back with bird flu and their flocks, but so far, no human cases, around sixty-eight cases nationwide, most of those are in California. Clinic visits, one thing I want to talk about, that our clinic's shown a lot of growth over the last year with addition of new staff, you can see a big spike in the number of clinic patients we had in September and October, and that was right around immunization time for students and in fact, school physicals. And then, as you can see, we have a little bit of increase even in February with the shorter month and the closures, because we've made some changes to our templates and our schedule. So even with three days out and a shorter month, we're able to see a little bit of increase to seven hundred and seventy-one patients in February. Our monthly show rate, seventy-seven to eighty percent, it kind of toggles back and forth. One thing I did want to highlight was STD visits, we saw a big dip in two thousand and twenty-two with the loss of a lot of staff, we've sensed with our STD rapid clinic, brought those back up, and then last year, around two thousand four hundred visits to that clinical. Environmental health update through January, on-site wastewater, that's our septic tanks, we've had nine hundred and forty-one site visits, six hundred and fifty-six sites evaluated, four thousand one hundred and fifteen consultations, and a hundred and thirty permits issued, that's just for new septic systems. We have a lot of other numbers, but I've just pulled you some of the highlights to share with wells, we've done about two hundred and fifty-three consultations, eighteen permits for new wells, also done a lot of repairs, revisits, and so on. Food and lodging program, total inspections through January for the fiscal year, one thousand fifty-four, five thousand consultations, so that's if somebody wants to book in a food truck, or have a restaurant, have a question, or a citizen complaint or something like that, would be these kind of consultations with businesses, so over five thousand of those. Five hundred and forty-four restaurant inspections, hundred and twenty-two food stands, forty-two food trucks, school lunchrooms fifty, schools seventeen, childcare centers ninety-four, residential care thirty-nine, three hotels, fifteen rest and nursing homes, eighteen institutional kitchens, year-round pools six, of course, that number's going to get bigger in the next few months, as we inspect a lot of the pools throughout the county, and then forty-eight tattoo artists so far this year. Our WIC participation rates, how we get funding from the federal government, USDA, is through our baseline participations, they assign us a number of people that we need to have for the year, and if we go below that, we're in danger of losing funding, if we go above, we might get an additional appropriation. So our baseline this year was four thousand one hundred and forty-three, we're currently at one hundred and four point eight eight percent of baseline, so we're, just saw about a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar increase in the next day eight for this year, and then potentially in October, if our numbers continue to go up, we could see a rebalancing of those. So very happy with our WIC staff, and we've been able to accomplish in terms of women, infant, children, nutrition program. Just a touch on care management programs, these are outreach programs for high-risk pregnancies and for at-risk children, you can see our at-risk care management, our current rate is a hundred percent, the state's target is ninety for all prepaid health plans, and so I think our rates, we meet all our benchmarks across all two of these programs. So these six benchmarks, outreach and engagement, our rate is ninety-five point eight percent, our target's ninety, and then utilization, they look at the number of total potential pregnant women in Pitt County from a certain age group, and then how many are actually pregnant, and we refer, and then how many we see, so we target, our rate, we get one point six, and the target's one point two. And again, with care management for at-risk children, our rate exceeds the target rate, we have ninety-four point four percent, the target's ninety, outreach and engagement, ninety-two point nine, the target is ninety, and then utilization, two point three, the target's one point eight. So only thirty-two counties met all its target benchmarks for the year, and that's really important, because if you dip and you go below these benchmarks, you're in danger of these prepaid health plans taking these cases themselves. Right now, they give us funds to do these cases, and so we want to make sure that we keep those in-house, because we feel that local folks are better to reach some of these pregnant women, at-risk children cases than say, a call bank somewhere out of state. Dental update, we restarted the dental program, we started at Creekside Elementary in January, we've been to Ridgewood, Lake Forest, currently at Wintergreen, and then moved into WH Robbins, and these are the next schools that we're going to be hitting, and then moving it back to the Health Department for the summer, and then we're going back into the schools in the fall. Health education, health promotions, want to quickly highlight that, we've just published our Community Health Needs Assessment for the past year, we looked at the county surveys, we looked at historical data, we've looked at focus group surveys, and our core health recommendations, and we've come up with the three priorities for Pitt County, behavioral health, including substance abuse, healthcare access and quality, and especially sexual health, STDs, and that was a special highlight from our Board of Health, and then physical activity and food access and security. In terms of human resources, through today, we've had twenty-four new hires for the fiscal year, five turnover staff, and two retirements, so right now, we've got about eight open potential positions, most of those we already recruit for, we had great interviews with two applicants for our dental assistant position the other day, and several more that are waiting on the background checks and other things, but we're really getting up to where we really have a few potential vacancies, which is great. Some department highlights, again, with opioid sentiment, we're seeking opinion on the use of opioid funds, so our staff have been meeting with the stakeholders, which are the groups that provide these opioid services for residents, and have also been doing, gathering input from the community, so we had three of those meetings throughout the county, and then right now, we have a RFP open on the county website for these county groups, for these substance abuse groups to apply for funding, that closes on March twenty-fifth, and then they'll be invited to apply for a full application. Other department highlights, we've had several staff become an employee of love, which is great, but how they, other staff, they've been talking with ECU, Department of Public Health about redoing their curriculum program, we also had several staff attend the annual Minority Health Conference in Chapel Hill, and Shannon Holton, WIC Director, Nutrition Director, was recently published in Nutrition, Reno Health, for pediatric patients, so we're happy with Shannon. Another thing I want to highlight is Green Bull Civic Ballet gave our breast cancer program three thousand dollars, which was the proceeds of their most recent play, that was A Wizard of Oz, so we have a booth out there just thanking them for that highlight, and then give us a shout-out in the brochure, and reflect on the program and all that, just to let people know that the program's available, and that donations were going to that program to help us see more patients. And then one thing too, I want to mention that went live a few weeks ago, in an effort to better serve the WIC patients in our lobby, we have TVs all over the lobby, so big screens, and so when a WIC patient comes in, they check in right there, and they open the door, and it gives them a number, and then they can see where they are in the process, and it's kind of like McDonald's, you ever go in there and they'll show like your order, and what's they're serving right now, and then it'll say it on the screen, and also announce in the building, so you're sitting there, and you can tell them what window to go to, and so you're not sitting there for ten minutes at one minute when you're next time for the appointments. That's called a queueless system, so we're trying it out in WIC, if it all works out, we might expand that to our clinic staff and all that type of stuff, so that's just something we're trying to do to improve the patient experience. With that, if you haven't answered any questions?
Any questions from Commissioners? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a few items for your Managers' Report this evening, first item is your next meeting dates, we will continue to be meeting in this room for your March twenty-fourth and April seventh meetings, we're hoping to return to our original meeting space in May. Item B, reminder, tomorrow evening at four PM, Welcome Middle School is a joint meeting with the Greenville City Council to discuss the mega-site project. Lots of presentations will be made to answer questions, you'll start that evening with a tour of the property, come back, hear presentations, and then one of the recommendations will be to have four public input sessions thereafter, so there'll be sufficient opportunity for those with questions, or those in the public who want to share ideas or thoughts, to share those once they're given the basic information about the project. Also, you have a joint meeting with the Pitt Community College Board of Trustees on March seventeenth at eight-thirty in the morning, that's at the Eddie and Jo Allison Smith Center for Student Advancement, that agenda has just been prepared, we'll share that with you, and that's our annual meeting now, the fourth year in a row for that joint meeting. Reminder, April first, from five-thirty to seven-thirty, we are very fortunate this year to have Commissioner Anne Lloyd Huggins serving as your NCACC District Two representative. As such, she hosts in our district, a meeting for District Two, and that meeting will be that evening, a special treat that evening, the President of the NCACC, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, T. Davis, as an initiative where he's highlighting different county departments, and folks he's calling local heroes to highlight some of the work that not everybody knows counties do, and we will have selected at that meeting a Pitt County employee who will be recognized and share some of the things that Pitt County Government does in their particular area. that Pitt County government does in their particular arena. So I think that will be a special meeting dinner will be served. Please let the clerk know if you'll be able to attend and support Anne Huggins as your District Two representative. Item E, I wanted to open up for those who attended the NACO Legislative Conference last week. If anybody has any, any Commissioners have any reports from that meeting?
Sure. I have made some notes. First of all, as you stated, it was the NACO National Association for National Association of County Commissioners. And it was our legislative conference starting on March first and the fourth in Washington, DC. And at that, at that conference, there were over two thousand attendees there, which make up of Commissioners and staff. We attended policy, community meetings, agriculture, rural affairs, community economics, workforce development, environmental energy, finance, health, human service, justice and compensation, transportation, health, communication technology. We also attended caucus meetings, all of the North Carolina committees attending caucus meetings in rural, mid-sides, these mid-sides counties and rural counties and large counties. And then we had meetings of regional, where people from the south, people from the central, northeast, and western, all mid and region. The general sessions, we heard from Senator Bader Fook. We went to the Capitol where we had lots of exercise. We met with House Senator Tillis and Senator Gill. And this was a joint meeting of all of North Carolina Commissioners and attendees that met with Commissioner Wood, Senator Burris, and Senator Tillis, all in one room. So, and of course, Senator Burris said that SNAP, the SNAP program would not be, would not be touched. So, but we'll see on that. We met with Representative Greg Murphy and in his office, just Pitt County delegation. One thing that Representative Murphy said, of course, we talked about SNAP program. And he, he does not like junk food on the menu in school cafeteria. He mentioned that. So even though Pitt County is not represented by Senator, not by Representative Don Davis, we did meet with Representative Davis along with some other county Commissioners. We left them with the list of goals. And you have that list at your seat. He's a list of NACO policy priorities and also the federal goal along with our Pitt County goal. So you have, have that, that's your, that's your, that's your. We, of course, we urged them to support all of the goals, federal, state, and our local ones. So it was, I think it was worthwhile conference. We had to network with other county commissions. We got new information, updated information. And then also, I think, if, North Carolina is really one of the largest states that have, have a large attendance at these conferences. So people are really, they say, oh, there's a lot of North Carolina people here. Every time I turn around, I'm reminded that there's somebody from North Carolina. So you all are well-represented. So I think that says a lot for our state. And it says a lot when we as a county go and represent and get information.
Helen, or Mary?
I think that Commissioner Helen Sumner has a quite eloquent thing. But I do want to mention, I think, my little gentleman here, for the job he spoke of, veteran, I was pleased to know I'm not a veteran, but my father was. This administration seemed to highlight a lot of benefits for veterans that will be happening during this, during this year. The Green Light Program to recognize veterans. Certainly, I think that's appropriate and I really enjoyed hearing it. Basically, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. And then the last thing, Mr. Chairman, on items for my Managers' Report is to provide an update on the request for proposal. That's an RFP for security services and the request for qualifications for student strategic plan, both as directed by the board and both anticipated to be issued this first quarter of the calendar year, third quarter of the fiscal year. So both of those requests have been prepared and we hope will be released this week once we finish our internal approvals on those and get those out. The RFQ for strategic plan will be a county-wide strategic plan. And we're anticipating that we will get responses that will incorporate information and perspectives from this Board of Commissioners primarily, also from county department heads and staff. Have a robust, robust series of public input sessions to find out what the community wants, bring back an interim report to this board, get your direction, any further follow-up, and then bring back their final report with recommendations for a county-wide strategic plan. So I'm excited to embark upon that process. You may recall, we received two sources of grant funds to cover the cost of this. And I think this will really be positive for Pitt County moving forward. So I just wanted to give you the update that you will see that out for RFQ this week. And then secondly, I wanted to remind you about the security services. So currently, we use private security services for your board meetings as well as at the farmer's market and other board meetings as needed. With NC Protection Group, we use Allied Universal for security services at the Pitt County Courthouse. And we use ENC Protection Group for services at the Department of Social Services for both in their facility and for transportation. And so we've issued an RFP for, we plan to issue this week an RFP for those security services where companies may bid on the entire package for one or multiple of those service areas. So I hope that we'll get folks who will sharpen their pencils and provide us the quality services that we need to focus on safety during our county activities. In that process, one of the things I wanted to bring to your attention, and I can share it with you this evening, if it's something you want to act on now or I can bring it back for you to consider at your next meeting. But one of the things that came to my attention throughout this process was that in your law enforcement ordinance number four, that's the ordinance that prohibits the carrying of deadly weapons on property, you have a list of exemptions. And those exemptions are for members of the armed forces, civil officers of the United States and the discharge of their duties, soldiers and militia, those charged with executing the laws of the state, sworn law enforcement officers, and those who are granted permission by the Sheriff of Pitt County. In our RFP, we have proposed that we continue to utilize armed security services who are licensed and trained pursuant to the regulations within Chapter seventy-four C of the Private Protective Services Board, oversight from the state. And that's what we've been utilizing with the county. We do not have an exception in our ordinance for armed security personnel. And I would like to add that to the ordinance as a belt-suspender's approach as we move forward. I did have a conversation with the Sheriff about this. And she has shared her perspective with me as well. She has no concerns whatsoever with NC Protection Group being armed here. But she, in other instances, does not want to assume liability by providing consent. And so I would be either seeking this evening or at a future meeting, that modification. Would you agree?
Yes, thank you, Madam Manager. I would move that we add the exception for armed armed security services pursuant to the chapter that we read, just as a matter of course. So we can go ahead and go forward with this. I think it's really important that our security services are properly equipped to secure all of our county facilities as UD appropriate and our risk manager needs appropriate. So I would make that motion now. And I think that will happen this evening.
Please. Go ahead and motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed, motion carries.
Unanimously, thank you so much. I'll go ahead and get that done. And that's all that I have in my report this evening.
All right, moving on to items for consent. Go ahead and motion.
Second.
In a second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed, motion carries unanimous. Item for decision, Commissioner Manning discharges of power on ordinances, first reading.
Ma'am, what do you want me to read?
No, it can be as simple as a motion, as long as it's presented in the packet and this is the ordinance that you're proposing to be set out.
There are two ordinances, can I do one at a time?
That would be more beneficial for the clerk. For the next.
Well, in that case, I'll just make the motion. I think we've had enough discussion for last week.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, we make the motion that we accept the proposed ordinance regarding shooting and assault property by owners.
You have a motion?
Sir.
In a second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries five-four. Back to you, Commissioner Manning.
Then I would make the motion that we accept the proposed ordinance regarding shooting in distant populated neighborhoods, twenty-nine, thirty-six, eight.
You have a motion?
Sir.
In a second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, like I said? Motion passes five-four. Item number two, reappointment to Board of Equalization and Review.
Yes, you have three reappointments coming up for the Board of Equalization and Review. Members Jeremy King, Andy Piner, and Elbert Buck are all up for reappointment. It's noted in your packet that if you reappoint Jeremy King and Andy Piner, that it would be an exception to your policy based on the number of years served. We did advertise for these positions and received no other outside application. So we'd ask for you to consider those reappointments.
Motion to win all three.
Go ahead and motion. In a second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed, motion carries unanimous.
And I'll, in accordance with that motion here, I think we'll remain chairman.
All right, we're down to Commissioners' comments. We'll start all the way to the end. Commissioner White.
No comment.
Commissioner Nunley.
No comment.
Commissioner Huggins? Commissioner Buckle? Commissioner Manning?
Just that Mr. Rich is there, spoke to my wife the other day. They're looking for volunteers to gather their bills on wheels. I'm going to check them out, let them on this week, see what's on the back.
All right, Mr. Smith?
Good comment, sir.
Commissioner Bryan?
Just that I would like to say thank you for Victorius Levy for the presentation tonight and for your mission. And it's been an honor, actually, to be here. Thank you, Mr. Huggins.
Mr. Perkins, please.
Yes, I would like to say that this is women's pretty much. Women kids pretty much should not go in this. And I'd like to highlight our first opening, female chief of the fire department. And gosh, my people give a little more name.
Tina Dixon.
Which is, and matter of fact, not only is she the chief, but her husband is as well. So this is a household chief. And this is our first female chief of fire. And I like it recorded. And she's been there for a number of years now. And I forgot how many. So I don't watch the past proud about me. I like this brave female.
Thank you, ma'am. I would like to recognize NC real Laura Steen Brown. Thank you for coming. With that being said, that is it.
I like her.
Go ahead.
I like her. Motion to have the bell hung, this is over.
Go ahead and motion. Second, all in favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned, thank you all.